Sorry about that. I am not sure what's going on. It just crashed on me and told me to re-sign in, so.
Or Ben, I don't know if you saw my notes. I'm getting a lot of messages from staff saying they can't get in.
Who? The people in the waiting room?
Brandon and Jill.
Yeah, and Sarah and all the strategy team can't get in either for some reason. I sent them this link, but I don't know what's going on.
Yeah, and I got kicked out, but then I was able to finally get back in just now. I wasn't able to initially, so I don't know what's going on either.
Can we go ahead and admit everybody that's in there?
Yeah, I think we should. I think we have to. I think you have to at the meeting when we switched it from the webinar to the meeting. When you guys were testing it the other day and thought that was the best option, I think we have to admit everybody in.
Right.
But I think we're missing a lot of people still because Jill and Brandon are not in the waiting room and they're both saying that they can't get in, that they're getting a message saying that there's a session already in flight.
I had that happen too.
Yeah.
And Amy, so did I. This is Kim, but I was able to get back in now.
Yeah, I don't know what happened either. I got kicked out, so.
And I tried another Zoom and it wouldn't let me in, but then this one let me right back in again. So I think we're okay. Okay, we'll wait another minute and then we'll get started because I think we're okay. I think we're okay now. So.
Yeah, and just for those who are joining who are not on the Business Council Board or Business Council staff, we're holding this meeting in a meeting format, not a webinar format, which is why everybody has been admitted. And so just to give you a heads up of why it looks the way it does. So if those of you who are not associated directly with the Business Council, if you wouldn't mind turning off your cameras, that might make it easier for us as we're getting into roll call and then getting the meeting started. Thank you so much.
Okay, so I think we are ready to start and I just wanted to welcome everybody this afternoon to the work session. I'm so excited to hear about the budget and about the work streams that we have been working on. The Strategy Committee has been working on for a year and some now. And if you've been involved with that, there's a lot going on and it's so interesting. So Josh, would you like to? Oh, we need to do roll call first. So, okay.
Madam Co-Chair, I can take care of that for you.
Thank you.
So Mr. Aaron's.
I'm here.
Mr. Brown. And Mr. Brown is excused. Ms. DeBoer.
Sorry.
Yep, I got you. Thank you so much, Ms. DeBoer. Ms. Harvey is excused. Ms. Johnson. Mr. Kenyon. And I saw Mr. Kenyon earlier. Do we still have him on?
He may be trying to get back in again, Amy. I'll give him a text. Yeah.
Mr. Law. Thank you. Ms. Moore.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Schaefer. And I know Mr. Schaefer may be in and out a little bit, but right now we've got him marked as absent. Mr. Smith, Madam Co-Chair, Mr. Smith just texted me and said he will be on very shortly.
Great. Okay.
Madam Co-Chair and Amy, if I might also, Mr. Schaefer, Dr. Schaefer will also be on just very shortly.
And Ms. Thayer is excused. And Ms. Tomasi.
Here.
Okay, so Ms. Tomasi, currently, right now, you have five board members on, which is not quorum of the board. That is okay because today's a public work session and we will not be taking any action on any items today. But did want to note that you do not have quorum at this point in time.
Okay, great. Thank you, Amy. Okay, so as I said, we're going to be discussing budget first and Josh, if you'd like to start that, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Co-Chair, and thanks, members of the board and team, and then others that have joined today. It looks like we've got a few folks from around the state who have joined as well. Looking forward to talking a little bit about the 2526 budget, which for those of you who are looking into the future, yeah, that's how far into the future we are thinking about and we are looking. So we'll go ahead and I'm going to share my screen and go through a few different slides to kind of help us get centered on the budget. So you should be seeing a slide that says fiscal year 2025-2026 budget. I always like to start with the idea that we are really trying to lead economic growth, build resilient communities and create opportunities to thrive. And if you think about that, what that really means is as an agency, we're here to really kind of look at where are the gaps and where are the things and the places that government should be in order to unlock that economic growth. We're not necessarily completely responsible for economic growth, but we are really helpful in that we really kind of just provide those little pieces that private industry and our local communities need to thrive. And that really fits into that building resilient communities. A lot of times I think we sort of think a lot about businesses and we think about how do we increase the number of businesses and jobs in Wyoming, and of course, that's important. But we want to do that while at the same time making sure that we are making it so that our communities are resilient as well. I think that we have all been part of a community or seen a community where a particular industry comes in and does a great, does great things over time, creates a lot of jobs. But we're really perilously tied to that particular industry or even employer. And we don't have a broad base of jobs or opportunities in that community that allow us to make sure that we can grow. And so what happens is that we are, we are sort of almost scared to lose that industry. And sometimes we lose those through no fault of our own, through market forces, and that makes us really kind of fragile. And so we're trying to build that resilience by creating more opportunities. And what we mean by that are really frankly, more jobs for Wyomingites. And so as we go through our budget, you're going to, one, see this theme a lot. But two, you're going to realize that what we're doing each day while we're out there, all of the time that we spend in the communities we work in, in the figurative communities, things like entrepreneurship or in our venture world or with the industries that keep us going like agribusiness and things like that. As you see that, you're going to notice that we're really working hard to develop a process to make sure that we can continue to succeed into the future. And the reason that we think about that is because the biggest challenge that we face is that we're just not positioned to maintain or increase the quality of life across the state because we don't have the systems in place to do so. And so while that might not seem as exciting as those silver bullets that we see all of the time, as if we could just get this one project, that's not really what we want to hang our hat on is that one project. Because we don't believe that one project will save the state, nor will it save a community. And it's not going to create the sustained economic growth that we need to have a Wyoming that's relevant into the future. And so when we look at our budget, we are looking at how do we think about a system that can make sure that we have the composition of economic activities to actually sustain a high quality of growth and life across the state. We do enjoy as a state a fairly high quality of life. And that's something that we don't want to take for granted, but it's also something that we, we need to make sure that we're continuing to increase because it doesn't have to be that way. We can, we can have the opposite. And so that's the problem that gets us up every morning to work on this. And we spend a lot of, a lot of our effort on that and a lot of our budget doing, really all of our budget doing just that. Mark, sorry.
Sorry about that. I couldn't find a little hand wave thing and I don't know if I'm in order at all in doing that. But just something that, as you talk about building resilient communities, just came to my mind as I've seen Sheridan transform. And we kind of now know the story of Sheridan, but, but I think there's another thing too that's in addition to the economic development of building resilient communities. Because if you're working for, VacuTech was the only company here and you're working for VacuTech and they decide that they're bought and they're going to move, then, then those people move. But now you see them going from one manufacturer to another manufacturer depending on the situation. And I think there's a real mental health component to that as well in terms of not living on the edge if you're, you know, if you're struggling a little bit in that one particular position. So again, like I said, probably totally out of order, but it just, I think it's in addition to economic development, I think it's, I think there's a mental health element of it too when it comes to providing for families and communities.
Yeah, well, Mark, I'm glad you touched on that and I'm going to, I'm going to keep going on that tangent for just a second because I think it's, it's actually a really important component of, of what we are trying to create in Wyoming. And what we're trying to create in Wyoming, and you mentioned the mental health aspect of it. But if you think about it, what we have in a lot of cases is a scarcity problem. We live with a scarcity mindset because of our natural resources. We live with a scarcity mindset because of the lack of diverse opportunities within our communities. And so what you're talking about is a real, is a real challenge. And it's not just the, there's the mental health aspect that you mentioned for the people who are there. If you only have one job and one job opportunity, boy, that's a pretty scary place to be. And so the more we can develop those clusters or develop that around people so they have options, they have that security, it doesn't mean they're going to leave to go to another competitor. It just means they're likely going to be more productive and happy in their current role. And, and so that's an element of it. The other part of it is that we also know that know-how, importing know-how is really critical to economic growth. Because we want to have more people that know different things in our communities. And when you're trying to ask someone to come into your community and there's only one opportunity for them, that's a scary prospect. It's really hard for them to de-risk that decision. But when, as you mentioned, when now there are other manufacturing firms, there are other places that someone can go. If it doesn't work out or if they want to grow, then they can make that decision a lot easier now in a, in a location like Sheridan because there's so many opportunities for them. And I think that that's really important and what happens is you get sort of a nonlinear or exponential growth potential because of that, because of that, that growth. So I'm glad you brought that up. It's, it's an important thing and it's, it's something that we think about a lot. So thanks, Mark. And, and I think many of you have seen this, this concept in one way or another. But the way that we have found, that is, that works really, really well to not just describe what we're doing, but also help people understand that we take an approach that is, that is cyclical. It's, it is not a, it is not something that we do one project and then walk away. It is also really determined by what is the biggest growth problem that you have? Or what is the binding constraint that is stopping economic growth? And so when we look at this idea of a flywheel, we don't want to just do a project and then walk away. We want to understand the conditions on the ground and in all of the communities of Wyoming, that's different. We also want to make sure that we're doing the right project, but we're also gathering the right resources and that we're really building the right team around us. And that, at that point, then we can do the right project. And once we do that project, and you'll, you'll see here in a couple of slides, the biggest key is not that the jobs are created, which is great. And that's a huge element, just like Mr. Law and I were just talking about. But it's also, how do we make it so that the community can do that again easier and continue through this cycle? And for most of the folks on this call, you're probably, you're less tired of hearing about the flywheel than you are triangles. But, but, but I think it's so important for all of us to really wrap our head around the fact that the flywheel is how we're going to make sure that the local communities have that resilience. Because the projects that we work together with them on are going to create the next project and the next project after that. And that flywheel will begin to spin faster and with more weight each time we do that. And that's really the idea behind it. So if we kind of take a step back and think about what does that mean to build a resilient community? I'd like to walk everybody through, again, something that is, is a description of BRC, Business Ready Communities, in, in a way that you've all seen it. But the thing that I want everyone to remember is that we have been continually honing this process so that we really kind of like optimize it or make BRC dollars as impactful as they can be in multiple ways. And so you think about, there's a community in the state, different levels. The community says we have a particular problem. We think we have a project that solves it. They work with the Business Council to develop a BRC grant or loan. In this case, we're going to use the Plenti example. There was a $20 million grant. There were $7.9 million of other funds brought to, brought to bear from the company itself as well as the community. And an asset was built. Now, on its own, that's really great because 202 jobs and $7.6 million a year of wages then get pumped into the, to the economy of the town. And that's fantastic. However, if we just stopped there, it's not that that would be bad. But there's more that we can do as a state economic development agency to help that community be, continue to be better and maybe even make it so the state can invest that money again. And so the way that works is we actually have a loop back to the community from that business and that asset that will generate revenue that they can use for economic development. And then, then some of that money also comes back to the state that we get to put back into BRC and use again in another community, on another project, to continue this flywheel in motion. And, and if you think about it, $20 million creates 202 jobs that are really great jobs. And there's, there's additional effects after that. We know that. However, just on this project itself, 202 jobs, $5.9 million of local revenue is created and $3.9 million comes back to the state. So that's a total of, of what is that? $9.8 million that comes back. And so this is a really cool thing to remember. Our local communities don't have a lot of capacity to generate revenue for economic development. Because our local communities don't have a lot of tools to generate revenue. And so because they don't have a lot of tools to generate revenue, they definitely don't have a lot of tools to generate revenue for economic development. So this tool, BRC, is incredibly powerful in that. And if you look at this project, as well as the Austin Engineering Project in Casper, in Mills, the Casper area metroplex, if you will, you'll see that, again, a $20 million investment, 15 in grant and five in loan, comes back to the community and comes back to the state in a big way. Creates a lot of jobs for Mills, creates a lot of local revenue that they can then do economic projects on their own. And it's, and the critical thing to remember is that we're doing two, we're getting kind of a twofer with our investment. We definitely want to create opportunities. We definitely want to make sure that there are jobs in a community so that people have that security, have that, that, you know, abundance mindset rather than scarcity one. We want to give the ability to import know-how. But we also want to make it so that the community can do it again on their own because our communities want local control. And so as you think about our budget, BRC is just an incredibly powerful tool in that regard. It really does truly make this flywheel work. Now, that's, that's important because we want to do that in as many communities as possible, as much as possible. Of course, we're, we asked for a number in our, in our original budget. The governor has, has recommended 38 million additional dollars into BRC for this, this biennium, which gives us a total of 62 million in this biennium. We think that's a good start because we know of, you know, about $150 million worth of projects that are out there that are going to need BRC funding. Again, because at the local level, we just don't have the tools or the capacity to do those projects on their own. But they're incredibly important to their economies. And so we, we look at BRC as, as, you know, that's the number one ask that we have. It helps us do the most good and it helps us really develop that flywheel in as many communities as possible. That additional $38 million that the governor has recommended could do two or three projects in the, in the big way, like those Austin Engineering and Plenti projects that you saw. Or it could do a few smaller ones. But again, for us, the focus is on, we're not just generating jobs. We're going to be doing things that generate revenue for the community so that they can continue to do it on their own. So the nice thing is, is that's an investment that kind of keeps on giving. It's not money that goes out there and then stops. It's money that goes out there and keeps moving. Now, the next kind of phase of our budget is, I'm going to highlight a particular topic, the SBIR matching funds. And that's another big ask that we have in the budget. And, and we're really seeing that as the, as a really good job creation tool and a really good recruiting tool for Wyoming is that SBIR funding. So we, we want to focus in on that, but it kind of falls into this creating opportunities for great jobs. And if you think about new businesses, especially those that start from a research phase and try to commercialize, there are a number of tools that they have. The federal government has their SBIR programs that we are allowed to match and we do matching of that. And that helps them get pretty far down the road. And with the Wyoming Matching Program, we're able to recruit companies, we're able to help companies start. There are a number of companies that we've worked with over the last couple of years that have utilized these funds. It's been a very popular program and helps provide some of the best jobs and wages that we create at the Business Council. Now, the challenge is for those businesses, that doesn't get them all the way to commercialization or equity from either private money or from, from YBC, the Venture Capital Fund that we have with, with federal dollars. And so we have been looking at, how do we help them get through that funding and know-how gap? Because we know that they, they need to get a little further down the road. And also that's an area where they could either import talent or develop some of that talent on their own as they develop their business. Well, it turns out that the federal government sees this exact same problem and they have expanded the use and the, the amount of money that can be utilized by SBIR companies. So the good news is, is that they have expanded that and there are opportunities for more money from the federal government for these businesses. Now, we want to follow suit and be able to match that money as well. And so a part of our ask is for that expanded use and that expanded amount for those businesses so that we can really kind of help them bridge that gap. And so that's where that $12 million ask comes in. Is it's going to help those businesses get further along, be a lot more solid and kind of get them to the next level of business. We see that as a, as a really good way to also attract companies and, and help the companies that are already here as a number of businesses in Wyoming utilize that SBIR program. Now, when it comes to leading economic growth, in a lot of ways, as I mentioned at the very beginning, that's really our role is not necessarily to be the ones doing the business counseling or putting the grants together and all of that. But it's really how do we facilitate and lead the economic growth? And, and we, we feel like there are a number of ways to do that. I, I think about it in terms of the people that are on our team and the programs that we support and support the various businesses and communities out there. And so I'm going to highlight the three people asks that we have. There are a number of, and we'll talk about them in a moment, a number of partners that are expanding what they do for us. But I want to highlight the, the people requests that we have in our budget because I think they're really, they're really pretty critical. And they, they talk a lot about, again, us helping out the, the folks on the ground and really kind of multiplying our effort. So if you, if you take it from left to right here, the first, our first priority is a regional director for the southeast corner of the state. Right now, that is a role that's being, that's being done by someone who's doing two to three roles right now, really. Our current regional director in that area is also the leader of the entire regional director team, team of six. And she's also involved heavily on developing our comprehensive economic development strategy as well as a number of the work streams that we're doing with the Harvard Growth Lab to really kind of unpack what are the problems in Wyoming and how do we go about solving those? So as you look at this, you know, one of the biggest areas of our state doesn't have a full-time regional director. Yet, there's a lot of growth that can happen in that area. So we really want to make sure that that's shored up and that that corner of the state has all of the resources it requires. The next component of our, of our budget is an entrepreneurial development expert here. And we have one of those folks on staff that are working now to just really map out the ecosystem as it relates to starting new businesses. How do those come about? Working with various partners around the state to do that. And one of the things that we've found is that there is a lot of need out there in coordination and mapping and understanding where the gaps are and being able to develop programs to fill those gaps, if appropriate, from government, but also to make sure that we maybe plug those together with the private industry. And so today, we've been doing that with one person. And, and now that we have the idea of, of expanding our SBIR as well as the venture capital funds that we have, we've really seen kind of an explosion of that and we need more resources because we want it to be a really vibrant ecosystem. We want it to have the tools it needs. And quite frankly, it's, it isn't, hasn't been mapped and we don't know where the gaps are as well as we will into, into the future. So that's an important role for us as well. And then finally, there's community leadership and engagement. And one of the ways to look at this role is that economic development is a pretty esoteric concept. And economic development, especially in smaller communities, can be really challenging because the folks that are there wear a lot of different hats. There aren't a lot of resources for them to do that. And sometimes they need some facilitation. They need some coaching. They need a way to really kind of look at what are their barriers and how do they address them? That's not necessarily going out and getting a big grant from the state. It might be some more simple things, some more work on their regulations. It might be an area where they're just not coordinated and, and working together on things. And, and that's a role right now that we have today. We have that role today and they, that, that person has developed what's called assessment to action, which is a way to understand what's going on on the ground and then begin to take action toward fixing that. It's a really real hands-on approach to it rather than doing a study and putting together a plan. It's really much more about doing. And, and so we see the, the number of rural communities in Wyoming as having a great need for that. And we want to expand and address that need as, as much as possible in the next few years. So, so as you take a look at, at all of those things, you know, we can dive into the particulars. But I think it's important again to kind of step back and say, our focus is on developing our community's ability to do economic development on their own. We do that with the funding that we create, we are able to, to grant out or loan out. We do that with things like SBIR matching and we do that with our people and, and our partners as well. And so the, the more we can do that and the faster we can do that, the the more economic growth that can happen and stability within those communities. But also we give our communities the power to do this on their own. And I think that the, every year that we wait to do that is a year or more down the road that they're able to get that flywheel going because it has a little bit of a lag in it. And so I'm going to jump into this table and then, then begin to address some questions. I'll start with Madam Co-Chair. You have a question right now. I'm happy to, to take it.
I do, Josh. And this is just a clarification. So if a community... So if a community wanted to develop a flywheel on their own, which is what we want them to do. Um, they would then go to, but they don't have like a, a main manufacturing, uh, facility or entity or anything main in their community to start. Would they then talk to the community leadership, uh, person that's like doing the assessments? And have them, give them a hand trying to focus in on what they would want to do?
Yeah.
Or how they would want to start?
There, I think the best first step in all of these discussions is our team of regional directors. So our regional directors, you know, really they, they understand the programs that we have. They understand the idea of how to create a flywheel. They understand exactly kind of the communities. They know their communities really well. That's always.
Sure.
My, my recommendation for your first step is, is working with your regional director to start, start to unpack the problem. And then depending on what that problem is, then the regional directors will pull in resources from our team or from our partners to point them in the, in the best direction.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions on what I presented so far? Okay. Well, let's, let's just take a, a, a really kind of high-level view of this, this exception request. So we have our standard budget, uh, which the governor recommended. And then there are, are exceptions, which is over and above our standard budget. So these are areas we want to put more resources toward. And we have a, a number of, there are fifteen requests that are kind of like non-housekeeping and things that really keep us moving. And of these fifteen, we've sort of classified them in, in two different ways. One is leading economic growth. Again, you can think about partners and programs and, and people. That is our, that is our people leadership, our partner leadership. And then there's the building resilient communities and creating those jobs. And those are those two different colors there, kind of the, the greenish blue is, uh, is our, um, leading economic growth. And then the, the mob or whatever color that might be from the eighties, um, uh, the, the, uh, creating, uh, uh, is, is for the creating opportunities and building resilient communities.
Josh, I, I believe that's.
Question.
I believe it's terracotta.
Oh, terracotta. Thank you. Terracotta.
Yeah, thanks, Josh. I actually thought it was that peach color that nobody ever uses in the crayon box, but, um, terracotta sounds fancier.
Hey, quick, quick question just for, for my, my benefit. So, so many of the requests that you have here, exception budget requests appear to be passed through funds that would suggest contractual relationships with other entities. Um, some of those are political subdivisions or government entities. Am I, am I reading that correctly? So, so in essence, are we requesting funds for a purpose with the intention of subcontracting that work? Or am I reading too deeply into this? So, uh, thanks, Dr. Schaefer, and you're, you're right. Some of these are, so seven, eight, oh, excuse me, eight, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve, as well as fourteen, are all funds that are part of contractual obligations with other entities. And in those cases, those entities have been performing at a level that we're, um, we're happy about it. We want to continue on and we want to, um, kind of help them further their mission, which helps us further our mission. And so that's what those are. Um, do you have any specific questions on any of those?
No, more, more curiosities. I think in some cases there are also, you're probably also satisfying matching requirements for federal allocations. Uh, but the rest of it is more curiosity that we can discuss offline.
Yep, but that's a, that's a really good point. That's what a lot of those are. Um, I will, I will go ahead and comment on two of those, uh, numbers twelve and fourteen. Number, numbers twelve and fourteen, um, got a, a recommendation of zero from the governor. Now, it's important to note that number twelve, the Wind River Development, um, fund that we have, that, um, was, was zeroed out in our budget because it is going to be handled by the ARPA funds in another budget. So the governor is not recommending that we don't fund that. Rather, that funding is going to come from another source. The item number fourteen though, is the Asia Pacific Trade Office. Um, traditionally, uh, Governor Gordon has not recommended funding for this, for this trade office. Um, and so it will be up to the legislature to decide whether to continue to fund that or not. Um, beyond, beyond that, um, again, we can kind of take a look at this. I, I hit the high-level things at the, in the intro of the budget. Um, but I think it's important to note that, again, we feel like that business-ready communities increase, um, a way to generate the, start the flywheel moving in a community or keep it moving faster in a community and build that economic development, um, capacity as well as create jobs. That to us is, is that number one priority. Um, we're, we're fairly, fairly, uh, happy about the governor's, uh, request to do thirty eight million more dollars in that. That's going to go, go a long way. And then that twelve million dollars is also, uh, a really useful tool for us in the S B I R matching. Um, if you step back from this budget, and I haven't looked at the other agency's budgets, but if you step back from this budget, I think that when you look at the governor's recommendation and you look at the number of areas where he has recommended that we fund, it's pretty darn good. That there were only, um, again, there were only really two areas that he didn't fund. Um, the Asia Pacific Trade Office traditionally not funded by the governor. Um, and as I mentioned, the, the Wind River Development, that's handled by another budget, so I'm not counting that. And then finally, the one that he, he did not recommend again was that community leadership and engagement, um, role. And, and in some ways, that's, that's, uh, likely because he, he's a, he is pretty darn conservative. And he's, um, and in many agencies, he probably didn't allow them to, to add any more people. Um, but he's allowing us to, to add two out of three. So that's a really good start, I, I believe, when it comes down to it. So, um, I think all in all, we're, we're pretty darn happy about what the budget is gonna, gonna do for us. If, if, again, if it stands as it goes through J A C. Any other questions? And I'm happy to take questions, um, uh, Madam Co-Chair. If, if folks from the audience, uh, and, and allow public comment, I'm, I'm happy to field any questions that folks have on our budget. Um, otherwise we can, we can move on, um, and you can, you can see the presentation to J A C, uh, next, uh, Tuesday.
Josh, what time is that next Tuesday? Do you have a time?
Ten fifteen to eleven fifteen.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. All right.
So I don't see any questions, any hands? Yep. Okay. Okay, so I think we're ready to move on. Okay, so, uh, so I think Sarah probably is presenting the, am I correct on that? Sarah's probably presenting the strategic work streams? Or at least introducing them?
That's correct, Madam Co-Chair. This is going to be an immersive and participatory experience. So you'll get to hear from me for just a little bit. But, um, but then you'll get to hear from almost everybody on, on the Business Council staff team. And you'll get to, to break out into breakout sessions to, to learn a little bit more about work streams that you are specifically interested in. Um, so today, what, what we'll do is I'll, I'll kick us off just a little bit. And then, um, we'll hear from each one of the work stream leads. They'll, they'll walk through three, three questions about their specific work streams that they're working on. Um, and then, like I said, we'll break out into breakout sessions. There'll be a chance to pop into two of those work streams and learn a little bit more of those. Those will last ten minutes each. And then we'll come back out and we'll wrap it up. Um, so with that, I will share my screen. Right, let's see. Okay, you just saw this slide in, in Josh's presentation. But I think it's worth repeating again because this is really what ties us all together. The Business Council is a team of people. We are located all across the entire state of Wyoming, as you know. But what binds us together is our focus on that one main growth challenge, which is the composition of economic activities is not positioned to sustain a high quality of life across all parts of Wyoming. That's what every single person at the Business Council is working on. And so when we talk about our strategic work streams, all of those work streams are in service of solving that problem. We do that by using the economic growth flywheel. We try to identify problems that, that fit in, that are sub-problems of that overall growth challenge. And then we take the steps that we need to, to try things that might help solve that problem. And we bring the right people around, around that problem to the, to, um, who have the authority, the acceptance, and really just the buy-in to do that, to solve that problem that we need. Through this entire process, we're generating local capacity all along the way by bringing in the right people and teaching as we learn. Okay, so work stream. You'll remember that last year in December of twenty twenty-two, we, um, we worked with the Growth Lab at Harvard to put together a, a what's called the Growth Perspective. And that was that big, long report that I shared with all of you, um, and some of you got the chance to read through it. Uh, one of the folks from the Growth Lab presented it at the Wyoming Business Forum, at the Governor's Business Forum. Um, and that was really a document that said, that took a step back and said, what is Wyoming's overall growth challenge? And that's really where we, how, how we defined that problem. And that overall challenge, I'll read it again because it's that important, is that the composition of economic activities in Wyoming is not positioned to sustain a high quality of life across all parts of the state. In that growth perspective, in that, in that sort of taking a step back and taking a look at the problems that we need to solve in Wyoming to overcome that challenge, we identified that a lack of available workforce is one main problem. High housing prices and a lack of available housing for workforce is another sub-problem. We took a look at our, what's called our economic complexity, which is really, how is Wyoming's, um, uh, what, what is Wyoming's economy composed of? What industries make up Wyoming's, um, Wyoming's economy? And what can that lead us to in terms of next industries to develop? We also took a look at energy, knowing that the global energy landscape is changing rapidly. And we also looked at our fiscal system. Those were identified, like I said, back in two, December of twenty twenty-two. By the time we got to September of this year, so that's a little bit less than a year, about nine months, we had, uh, developed four more work streams. Um, and those were developed out of identification of problems. We, we have a, a team of almost forty people really talking to folks across the state and really learning about what their problems are. One of those is access to grants, federal and otherwise. We know that in Wyoming, we are, are challenged, um, uh, and we, we just are, are not, um, awarded the same level of federal grants as we, as our peer states are. So that was a problem that we, we decided that we needed to tackle. Another one really was, um, identified around, um, uh, around our work with Plenty. Um, in terms of, uh, uh, I, understanding what's the R and D system and support system in Wyoming look like? And what are the problems that need to be solved there to make sure that companies who are, um, who are, are very innovative, like Plenty, have the resources that they need? Together with that, like a lot of overlap with that is around the entrepreneurship ecosystem. So broadening that out beyond those companies that are really focused on R and D. But to all entrepreneurs across the state, what's missing in, in that, in that entrepreneurial ecosystem as well? Josh mentioned in his budget presentation, A to A Assessment to Action, which Amber is leading. And that was added as a work stream as well by the end of the summer this year. Then, two months later, we, we see a rapid multiplication of our, our work streams. Um, so the workforce work stream split up to focus, focus on four different worker pools. They had identified that there are these four different pools that are, are, um, that were challenged to, to retain and, and get these workers, um, matched with jobs in Wyoming. So they're, they are working on four different work streams within that workforce work stream currently. Same thing happened in energy, um, where we, we really have kind of pivoted a little bit to, to more focus on limitations on access to electricity for like, for economic development projects. And that energy export strategy is still happening. And then with A to A, with Amber's work, that's really multiplying, not necessarily in terms of scope or focus, but in terms of geographic implementation. So she is, so Amber and, and the team that's working with her at the Business Council has really been piloting that, that program and that new way of looking at things, uh, starting in Fremont County. And there are more to come there. So altogether, we started out in December of twenty-two with five teams working on solving five sub-problems of that, that main growth challenge. And now we have seventeen teams. Actually, we're adding one this week. Um, so now we've got eighteen teams. And as of last count, in addition to the folks at the Business Council, we are, there are twenty-six partner organizations who are working on these work streams with us. So that's a, a whole lot. And what today is, is designed to do is to peel back just a small layer of the, of the, potentially the confusion that you might be, be experiencing right now. There's a lot of this going on. It all ties back, but you might be thinking, well, what's, what's going on in that workforce work stream? I haven't, I don't know what's going on in there. So that's what this today is designed to help you do, is to learn just a little bit about each one of those work streams and give you the chance to learn just a layer deeper on two of the work streams that you, um, you think might be more, most interesting. So what we're going to do now is each one of those work stream leads are going to answer these three problems for you altogether. And be listening to these, um, to these folks as you, um, as they go through these and answer these problems. Um, because then you'll be able to pick two of those work streams to, to jump in and learn a little bit more about. So with that, I am going to save our housing work stream for last, even though it's the most mature. And I'm going to move into the, the workforce work stream, which John Jenks is leading and, and we'll get to hear from all four of those sub-work stream leads in that too. John, are you around to?
I am, I am, uh, yeah. Thank you, Madam Co-Chair. Thank you, Sarah. Um, yeah, as Sarah said, I, I have the opportunity to kind of quarterback the, the workforce work stream, um, from a high level and kind of quarterback the four sub-work streams. So I'll give a high-level overview of the workforce work stream in general. And then, uh, go into these questions on the justice-involved individual sub-work stream, um, that I'm also leading. So as a reminder for the workforce work stream, the problem that we're trying to solve is that the real and/or perceived number of available workers in Wyoming pushes employers to relocate out of the state, prohibits businesses from staying and expanding, and deters businesses from relocating to Wyoming. That's a long and complicated way of saying we don't have enough workers, as Sarah said. So, um, and as Sarah mentioned, uh, the, the workforce work stream is divided out into, to four sub-work streams, uh, focused on out-of-state worker attraction, um, higher education, so looking at the, uh, at the programs and retention rates of University of Wyoming and the community colleges. And then two work streams that are focused on traditionally marginalized populations in the workforce. And that's the justice-involved work stream and the childcare-constrained work stream. So, um, I'll go into the justice-involved one and then turn it over to the other work stream leads to, to talk about their respective work streams. Uh, the justice-involved work stream really came about because of, uh, us looking at the available. Because of uh us looking at the available amount of workers that are traditionally underemployed or unemployed in the that are justice involved. So justice involved could mean uh either on probation or parole or recent recently released from uh prison or jail. Um, or you know, just involved in the criminal justice system. So the problem statement that we're working on right now is that the there is a missing uh gap of of information between employers and service providers. Service providers, including nonprofits, Department of Corrections and Department of Workforce Services. Um, which results in under or unemployment among justice involved individuals. So currently, what we're working on is trying to identify opportunities to one, get the word out to employers um and industry leaders. To uh to talk about the programs that are available for justice involved individuals if they wish to consider um. Consider this uh this population as a part of their potential workforce. We're also working to align um programs within the Department of Workforce Services. Higher ed and the Department of Corrections. Uh, to ensure that all these different entities that are involved in in reentry are are working and talking together. And then also just engage flat out, just engaging employers. Um, doing one-on-one meetings with with their HR departments. Um, and and respective uh business um. Uh, and and respective owners or other stakeholders at the businesses to understand. Um, um, what their hiring policies are and to uh um communicate the the merits and and opportunities of hiring second chance. Really, the biggest roadblocks for this, um. Uh, there's there's really two, um, and I I think I've mentioned this at a previous board meeting, but I've done this work back in back in Kansas City at a previous job too. But really, the biggest roadblock is to get employers to understand that. Um, hiring second chance means a lot of different things, or hiring justice involved individuals means many different things. It doesn't mean that you have to hire somebody with certain criminal records or criminal convictions. Um, it's really just kind of um expanding the available talent work talent pool that you are looking at. And also really, it gives the employer an opportunity to look at their HR policies to. See if um certain convictions really uh mean that a certain person couldn't take a take a job. Um, or to look at their uh their, you know, application and and interview process as well. Well, so it's a really introspective look too that the employer can take um on this, but those are really kind of the big roadblocks. And then lastly, just understanding and mapping out everything going on across the state um is 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 um quite a challenge too. So with that, I will turn it over to Kristen, who is working and leading the childcare constraints of work stream. Kristen, I think you're on.
I am. Hey, thanks, John. Thank you, Madam Co-Chair and Board members for um. Giving this project the attention here that that we all are as well. And it's it's really interesting to participate in the childcare constrained. Subcommittee um both personally and professionally. So I mean, I'm a working parent myself. Many of the participants on the work stream. Are also working parents, and so they feel this very personally. Um, and it it impacts maybe their um ability to to access their own um. Uh, their own um childcare that's uh of quality and and available to them. So um right now, what we are all working on is um to analyze and interpret both um past and current reports, including. A provider impact assessment report that was done by the Department of Workforce Services and the Department of Family Services. And we're connecting with and observing the state's early childhood state advisory council meetings as well. So we plan to dig deeper on um, you know, all of all of this, right? To better understand and analyze the research that's available to us and to. Um, you know, kind of understand the market and what the constraints really are. On um individuals who are, you know, lacking childcare or lacking um affordable childcare. Uh, around the state, and that is preventing them from joining the workforce um if they so choose to. So um, we have partners with um uh Department of Family Services and Workforce Services. The Wyoming Women's Foundation has just come on board. And um, of course, the Early Childhood State Advisory Council, um among others. And so as we continue to drill deeper into understanding the problem. Um, we're working together to narrow down um and really dive into two specific counties to compare. Childcare access and affordability and to learn from licensors and providers in each of those counties. So we have a great grad student at the Harvard team that's kind of leading that research. At this point, and as we narrow down what counties we'll dive into. Uh, we'll be excited to learn from more more from him and from the rest of the team. Anybody have questions for me?
Yeah, Kathy, Ms. Tomasi, thanks.
You can call me Kathy, Kristen. Um, so Kristen, when you are. Investigating this. How I I think that a huge problem with childcare. And it's a pro and con problem are the regulations determined by the the state, I suppose. That um for childcare premises, et cetera. What are you finding that is a problem and what? What kind of uh things are you are are being talked about to maybe combat this or help with this?
Um, thank you. That's a great question, and it's one that we are thinking about and one that the Department of Family Services is already. Um, even before the work on this work stream started more formally. They were already trying to understand better what regulations might be a barrier. Especially when you think about um like home childcare providers, like childcare homes. Rather than like a childcare facility or a childcare center. So um the the quantity of the um, you know, how many children are allowed within the childcare home? Um, and some of those other kinds of regulations are things that they're trying to understand better. And maybe there is an opportunity to remove some of those barriers. And they're they're just trying to better understand how that looks across the state. And so some of what the grad student um will be researching and pulling um like a better set of data really on for us. Is what that looks like in the two specific counties. As almost like a comparative, so that we can understand what's happening, you know, say in Sublet County. And what what are the impacts that it's having on workforce availability? And if if it's likely happening there, you know, whatever the case might be, then it's probably happening elsewhere in the state as well. Anecdotally, we know that already, um but it'd be nice to have that data to kind of back it up and to provide that evidence.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Madam Co-Chair, for that question, and I'll just remind everybody that we'll you'll get a chance to learn all of these. Really rich details that are going in all of our work streams too in the breakout sessions too. John, who's up next?
Um, we'll go with Kaylee on the out of state worker attraction. Kaylee, are you on?
I am, yeah, thanks, John. Uh, thank you, Madam Co-Chair, members of the board. So just uh pretty briefly here. We have a a group working together with a handful of different stakeholders. Um, so we've been working with Department of Workforce Services with a few folks that manage some programs on their end. And we just recently added some individuals from state parks and the uh and Wyoming Tourism Office, so. The we're still working on our problem statement a little bit, but just if I could distill it down into something just just for this exercise. Um, in order to grow Wyoming's labor force and know-how, which is a factor that's currently limiting business growth. We need to tap into the out of state worker pool. And currently, we don't, we've had a system in place, but it's had some areas that it broke down and currently it's just not operating, so. Um, that's just an area that that we think we could start to um improve that that pipeline and that system for folks that are interested in working in the state. Helping actually get them here. So. Um, over the last few months, we've been working with Department of Workforce Services to better understand the budget ask that they currently have. To support Wyoming or why relocate in Wyoming grown. Um, we've interviewed nine different either state, region, or city worker attraction programs in other states. To understand how they run their programs and what barriers they face and hopefully kick some of those lessons and apply it to the work we're doing. Um, with the help from the Harvard Growth Lab, we've compiled some data just illustrating the really tight labor market that we have here in the state. So that Department of Workforce Services can use that to help back up their presentation their presentation at JAC. Um, uh regarding the why relocate program. We also created what was supposed to be a one pager, ended up having a little bit more detail, but it's still called a one pager. Um, just detailing um some zero to low cost changes that could be made to kind of our current program for for relocating workers. To help increase capacity and hopefully just kind of um increase success rates of those programs. And then, like I mentioned earlier, um, we did just recently invite some other partner organizations to be a part of that as well. So I think one of the big big things that we're running into right now is. One, we're just um patiently going through that budget process and just helping support DWS with the ask that they have. So um still waiting to to hear how that goes over the next few weeks here. Um, so I think the the issue we're running into right now is identifying what can we do in the meantime? Is there anything else we can do? Whether it's coming back and and working on our own kind of, you know, retooling that problem statement or working on some other things that could be done simultaneously. While we're also waiting the outcome of that budget request. So happy to answer any questions about this specific sub work stream in our breakout sessions.
Thanks, Kaylee. And last, but certainly not least, David and Taylor, um, I think you guys are both on. If you guys want to talk a little bit about the higher ed sub work stream, that would be great.
Thanks, John, and thank you, Madam Co-Chair and members of the board. Um, Taylor, if if you want to jump in anytime, feel free to. Um, at the core, the the problem could kind of be described in just as few as two words. It's it's really the brain drain problem. Um, and you know, related to programs and retention rates as well. It's kind of, in a way, you could think of it as the reverse of what what Kaylee just described to us. Um, it's it's our educated people going elsewhere for opportunities. Um, what our team is working on right now is a lot of data collection still. We're we're working on putting together some. Problem program completion, occupation mapping. Tying that in to additional data that's available through the SLEDs program. Which is the state statewide longitudinal education data system. Um, and then kind of trying to take a look at that and understanding where the gaps are. Um, other things to kind of consider along the way and and at least take a look at. Um, are obviously amenities, preferences. Um, regional connectivity and efficiencies and access to these educational programs. Um, some of the stakeholders that we have are Department of Workforce Services, University of Wyoming. Uh, the Governor's Office, the Growth Lab, and the Community College Commission. Uh, we've also done an interview with the Community College Research Center of Columbia University. To see what they're working on. And one of the team's biggest roadblocks right now really is data reliability. Uh, primarily as it relates to tying job openings back to some of the programs that we have in Wyoming. Um, I think as we continue to move forward, we're going to continue to unlock data through establishing legitimacy. Um, and just kind of building on this agency data sharing that we have where. There's a lot of data. We just need to kind of start to combine that and put put all the pieces together. And I think that's it, and I'm available for questions.
Thanks, David. And Sarah, that that should wrap it up. But one last comment, I think the workforce development work stream really um underscores that this project is. Is not just a Business Council project, but really is truly a state of Wyoming project. And uh it's really fun to engage all these other stakeholders on this uh on these sub work streams. So that's all I have, Sarah.
Sounds great. Thank you very much. Um, next, I think I will go, I'm going to go to housing because I see Heather has been able to join us.
Thank you, Sarah. Good afternoon, Madam Co-Chair, members of the board. It's nice to be here with you today. Um, so as Sarah mentioned right at the beginning, the housing work stream is actually the most mature work stream. We have had it um sort of up and running really for about a year. It kind of kicked off last year right before Christmas, and we were all like. What's a work stream? So um the evolution of this one has has both um been pretty incredible from the work that we've done, but also just as. As we've stood this one up versus some of the newer ones that Sarah was talking about. Our problem has um sort of remained the same because it is a little bit general. Um, in that the housing market in Wyoming is more constrained. Uh, than we see in other parts of the US with maybe similar situational um economies or or whatever's going on there. So we've sort of kept that as our our main problem statement. The core team for the work stream itself is kind of um small uh uh for various reasons, but it right now makes up the. Um, uh, the Business Council team, there's a four of us from there. There's um some folks from the Growth Lab. And then W CDA and the Governor's Office are the others that participate regularly in that with us. But our team right now is actually working on, I would say, maybe three different things. Um, one is examining regulations, and if you've seen the housing note, you know that regulations is highlighted pretty substantially in there. The um, the regulations are both local and statewide, and so there are. Um, there's different sort of ways to approach that. We are looking at at both and trying to understand what barriers there are that are caused by regulations. And what are things that maybe could be addressed um with small tweaks or are going to take maybe some larger uh some larger efforts? We've got a couple of proposed changes that we'll probably be seeing actually in the session coming up. Um, one relating to the unification of certifications of trades folk around the state. Sorry, trades folk sounds terrible, of trades people. Um, around the state, and that's something that I I think a lot of us didn't realize maybe was a problem, but is uh something that does create a barrier. In being able to get workforce, maybe from, say, Cheyenne, where we potentially have a more people working in the construction area. Um, and then them being able to go to another part of the state and do a project uh with the the um certifications don't always. Aren't always recognized um community to community in the state. And so even. Um, a larger problem is outside of our state boundaries. Uh, there's some other uh work we can maybe do there, but first we have to clean that up in the state if we can. And then also removing um or addressing the protest petition allowances that can basically uh keep a project from moving forward with a small. Uh, amount of people in an area uh being able to say no to a zoning change. Another piece that that team is working on is uh statewide collaboration, which we is super important in everything we do and in housing. It's it's remarkable how many people are working in the housing space uh for different reasons. And so trying to understand who's out there. There's a statewide uh housing coalition that was meeting before we came along. Um, but we have joined that group and really started working with them and getting down into the weeds. There are folks on that team that represent um. City and county government. There are nonprofits. There are other folks um from state agencies. The um, the W CDA, um Governor's Office. So it's really a robust group of people who have a lot of. Uh, a lot of knowledge and know-how in the housing space and getting everybody to come together in that has really, I think, been. Um, we cannot take credit for it because it existed before us, but it's really been a great way to to work. Through some of these housing challenges that we outlined in the housing note. And then the other piece um of that the work that we're working on now is sort of exploring. Alternative housing development opportunities and what exists um as far as funding opportunities for those, or maybe what are some challenges in that? Roadblocks that um that we've seen throughout the the existence of this work stream and and I think still are there. Uh, as I said before, there's a lot of voices, and so making sure that we crowd in the people who are working in the housing space. Who have the passion to get work done and making sure that we are all kind of unified in how we're approaching it. Obviously, there's people there that have different. Um, goals, they serve different populations, they work in different parts of the state, but truly having a unified voice and making sure that the people. Around the state who are working in that space have commonality in language and have a common understanding about kind of what the problem is. Can be really impactful. And so and maybe that's a roadblock and an opportunity, I suppose. Um, and then acceptance of the problem. Interestingly enough, uh, there is still work to be done in acceptance of the problem. At a a level maybe beyond those of us who work on the ground and boots on the ground day to day. Um, so that that will continue to be something that is part of conversation that needs to be had and just. Understanding why folks maybe don't think that's a problem or um, you know. Alternative opinions are absolutely welcome, but actually trying to kind of figure out. alternative opinions are absolutely welcome, but actually trying to kind of figure out how we can all come together is really important. And so I think the help that our team continued opportunities to have conversations, willingness to have conversations and introductions or connections if those need to be made.
Great. Thank you, Heather. Next, I'm going to go to Amber to talk about assessment to action.
Yes, thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Board, for the opportunity to talk with you a little bit about the Assessment to Action Program, what we're calling A2A. As we started thinking from the community and leadership and engagement perspective, we were really looking at how we support local leaders, both the informal and the formal leadership to move the needle on their local economic development goals and initiatives. And what we found is they were asking for a lot of help with not only strategy, but collaboration as well as Josh mentioned, moving forward, finding some way to create some momentum where they're actually moving the needle in their, in their communities. Based on what they're wanting to do in their communities for their local economic development. So A2A was developed in response to that. We actually used the flywheel ourselves to come up with this particular program. And the Assessment to Action Program really is introducing that same process to help communities identify the problems that they have in their communities, break down some of, and breaking down some of those barriers that are obstructing their economic development goals. So we go through the entire flywheel process. We are introducing that to communities on a small scale or a short term scale in terms of a workshop. We recently hosted our first workshop. That is our learning opportunity. We're incredibly excited with the communities that came to spend some time with us to help not only introduce the process, but then also help us learn and engage them so that we can provide a much better product in the future as well. So we're working on our second workshop to be, I think we're hoping to get a second workshop scheduled for the end of January, maybe the first of February, but before the session. And we are also working on developing that more intensive A2A program where we work one-on-one with communities on a very specific problem statement that they would like to address, help them develop teams and actually walk through that flywheel process on a much more developed in a much more intimate scale. So that we, maybe six to nine months again, depending on what the communities are hoping to achieve. And so we're really excited to get that started. We're hoping that we can pilot that particular program. Maybe late winter, early spring. Oh, and I guess I'm supposed to also suggest ways or hurdles that we have. The real thing that we need right now is information from those communities. So we have been in contact with those communities. We're iterating as we're learning more from the communities who participated in the workshop initially, so that again, we can craft a much better program that meet the needs for communities and their leadership. And we are really looking forward to working with additional communities. So we really need partners from leaders from different communities that are willing to jump in with us to help learn and grow this particular program. So again, we can help them craft or understand the process where we think that they can move the needle on their own economic initiatives and goals.
Great. Thanks, Amber. So important to, to really building the system that we need to solve that giant challenge that's before us. Next up, we're going to go back to Kristen, but she's going to tell us about grants this time.
Hello again. So our grants group has been continuing to meet since the last time I think I shared an update with you all. And we are continuing to kind of try to understand a little bit more what are the barriers to accessing discretionary grants or federal grants specifically, when appropriate to apply for them. So what we've discovered is that planning on the community level can be a challenge. Making sure that you have a clear purpose and intention with the monies that you are requesting in an application before you're even awarded the grant. And then after that point too, do you have the capacity on a local level or even on a, you know, a larger level to report appropriately on the grant and to utilize the funds to their best purpose and with and according to your community's plan. And so that's come to light a little bit more clearly in more recent months. And as a result of that, we've got a summary note that has been circulated and we're working on kind of understanding better from also the Governor's Office on how we can utilize potential budget funds to support a grant support system in the state. So out of the work streams, more recent work, there's this kind of organic process that has developed and in a group of volunteers from around the state that are contributing their knowledge and their expertise and starting to support each other in the grant writing process and in the grants planning process to how to best utilize funds when they're available and how to, how to best apply. And so that's kind of working in tandem with this work stream, which is pretty cool to see happening. The next kind of hurdle that we will jump over is planning an additional federal grants summit. Similar to the one that was hosted in June by Lummis's office. But that had proven to be so successful and people really thought that it was useful and helpful. And so there's another one being planned for this coming April. So that's exciting. And then, like I said, we're, we're in the process of trying to find out if it's possible to get a grant support network in place beyond just the volunteer group that I mentioned, but that would be supported through the Budget Office potentially. The State Budget Office, sorry. So anyway, we will see. And yeah, it's a, it's a great group that involves several agency partners and, you know, contract grant services providers around the state as well as Lummis's office and the Governor's Office.
Awesome. Great. Kristen, that's, that's a really cool one because it's really, like Kristen said, drawing this organic participation from across the state. So really helping to invite folks in. So thank you so much for that work, Kristen. And next up, we're going to move to Jill, who will be talking about the work stream that is really started around controlled environment agriculture and is, is kind of pivoting and broadening as we speak, it sounds like.
Thanks, Sarah. Good afternoon, Madam Co-Chair, members of the board. So we have the unique opportunity of bailing in on a work stream to use some of the skills we learned from the P2P project in real time with the flywheel. So we have this project that got off the ground in Laramie with plenty, like Sarah mentioned. And we really wanted to keep that momentum going and look at what are the problems to really growing that cluster. So you'll hear us reference it. CEA, research and development or R and D, cluster development. But it really comes back to a problem that we landed on, which is Wyoming does not have an ecosystem that supports research and development. So how did we get there? We, we spent a lot of time doing what we call fish boning, where we look at the problem and then we start figuring out what are the causes to that problem. And as we worked through those causes, a couple of things really kept jumping out at us and proving themselves to be a true binding constraint. And those really circle around marketing and the startup ecosystem. So another unique thing about this work stream is that we're, we're working in real time and trying to keep the momentum going of landing that plenty deal. So we've had some marketing efforts that maybe aren't necessarily tied directly to the problem, but we need to market Wyoming at the same time. So we've had Josh going around the country, speaking to some really cool audiences that are innovative investor audiences, State Departments of Ag, to really make sure we are in front of the people we need to be in front of. We have truly a rock star team working on this. And their expertise has been absolutely instrumental in making sure we're at the right place at the right time so that Wyoming is on that international stage. As we started working through these causes, we realized that we were struggling a little with data. And that's because while CEA may not be totally an emerging industry, vertical farming is. If you guys recall about plenty, it's, it's a company that is really innovative, really out in front in terms of their technology. So some members of the team jumped up and said, hey, let's, let's get some more data behind this. So we did that and and contracted with a company to try and get some more data going. So we're back in the problem analysis phase a little bit right now. Look, waiting to see what some of that data unveils. And then the second piece is to talk to companies around the state and ask them if, if you're engaged in R and D, what does that look like for you in Wyoming? In terms of what resources are you using? So the data was our roadblock, but where we need help is from each of you. If you know a company in your area or you're familiar with a company that uses R and D, that's a budget line item or they have people and resources dedicated specifically to that. Will you please reach out to us and let us know who those companies are? Because we just want to visit with them and get to understand that landscape a little better. So that was super quick, but I hope you'll come to our breakout room. I have a really cool video that I want to show you to give you an update on plenty. Thanks, Sarah.
Awesome. Thank you, Jill. Nice pitch. All right. So next up, we have Taylor, who will talk about entrepreneurship. And then we will close out these these brief little updates with, with one on the energy work stream. And that will be done by Wendy and then we'll pop in out into our breakout rooms. So Taylor, take it away.
Thanks, Sarah. Thank you, Madam Co-Chair and members of the board and the community members that might be out there. I have the privilege of working on the entrepreneurship work stream. And this is sort of an interesting work stream in that in, in, in all, for all intents and purposes, it's just me technically. But really what, what we're doing with this work stream is a little unique in that we're leveraging the resources across some of the work that Jill just spoke to. Looking at the overlap that exists between the CER and D work stream and the work that we're already doing, sort of the, the boots on the ground efforts that we currently engage in, and then some of the initiatives that we currently have. So from a high level, that's, that's what we're doing with the entrepreneurship work stream is really sort of looking at the opportunities to work with other work streams and engage with the, the problems that they're trying to solve through entrepreneurship. So as, as it pertains to things specifically entrepreneurship and startup ecosystem, the problem that we're, we're currently seeking to solve is that we're, we're seeing and recognizing a lack of systems that can help solve problems specific to new businesses, whether that's at the state, regional or local level. And so one, one way that we're trying to engage in that particular problem is through a couple of different initiatives. But specifically, we're working on an RFP, a Request for Proposals, that we put out earlier this fall. Asking for proposals that folks could basically help us figure out how we can set up a system and put up a system in place that helps us engage entrepreneurs' problems and sort of grease the wheels for new businesses in the state. Really looking at that from a perspective of what are new businesses needing right now, but also what are those new businesses needing into the future? And how can we adapt to those needs over time? So looking at that from a systems perspective in that it's really sort of a, a business to customer transaction or relationship, right? Instead of checking boxes, we're really trying to figure out how we can set up a system and work with other people across the state to set up systems that allow us to engage in problems in, in new and creative ways that is definitely more customer centric than what we're typically seeing right now. So that's, that's one effort. Another effort that we're working on is the, is what I call ecosystem mapping. And you'll hear it sort of in a variety of different capacities, but you can really think about that as a digital repository for business resources typically catering towards the new business and entrepreneur side of things. But it's not necessarily specific to new businesses, but that digital database of, of new businesses. And you can think about that as a, a startup journey, a map of that startup journey and what it takes to go from an idea all the way through to commercialization and then off into Kaylee's world, the business retention and expansion sort of realm. And so we're, we're looking at providers to help us map that landscape. And that does a couple of different things for us and, and, and helps us actively solve some secondary problems in the, in the process. Which is that it helps us bring the resources that we have right now closer to the businesses and the, and vice versa. So it allows that gap to be closed so that the resources that we currently have are more easily accessible to the businesses. So that's, that's the main one. Once we get this spun up, it also allows us to do sort of a gap analysis of sorts. So we can very clearly see that, you know, maybe there are only a couple of financing options out there and we can recognize that very clearly when we have that all mapped out. So it helps us to look at that ecosystem from a high level as well and understand more intimately what those gaps in services might be as well. In addition to that, how we're, how we're pulling this effort together is really relying on multiple partners across the ecosystem and outside of the Business Council. So this helps us engage the entrepreneur community directly so that we can build better cohesion, better collaboration and allows us to break down some of the silos that we're typically seeing in that ecosystem as well. So those are just a couple of the efforts that I wanted to, to highlight here without going into too much detail and taking up all the time. I think the, the biggest roadblock now, it really depends on, on, I guess, the, the project or the initiative, but what I'm seeing a lot of is there's, there is a, a big lack of coordination across the ecosystem. And I'm really hopeful that these efforts that we're engaging in help us break down some of those. But you know, my, my asks is that if you know of people specifically in local communities that are really engaged in the startup ecosystem or really want to help new businesses, I would love to know those people. I feel like I have a pretty good pulse on it, but I'm sure there are plenty of people out there that I, I might not be aware of. So that would, that would be an ask. I can never have too many people across the state to help lead efforts on the local level. So that, that would be a big one. And then another one that we're, we're working on overcoming also is just understanding, understanding the problems of businesses on a regular basis. Both from that statewide and local perspectives and, and how we can provide them the best access to the, the different resources that they need given, given the landscape. So without further ado, I can, I can end there and pass it off to somebody else. But I would love to talk to any or anyone else that would love to talk to me about entrepreneurship. This is all stuff that I, I live and breathe. So I'm always happy to answer questions and get more into the nitty gritty. There, there are questions out there. Would love to chat about that in the breakout sessions.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Taylor. All right. Our last one is Wendy Lopez, who's going to talk about the Energy Work Stream, which is maybe a little bit of a misnomer at this point in time.
Thanks, Sarah. Thanks, Madam Co-Chair, members of the board. And I know everyone probably has tons of questions about all the things that they've just learned about and are eager to get to their breakout room. So I will try to be brief. But yet, cool enough that you want to come to my breakout room, right? So as Sarah kind of indicated earlier, when we originally started thinking about this energy work stream, it was really looking at the fact that we're an energy producing state. And with coal diminishing, oil and gas diminishing, what do we need to do to diversify our economy? That typically means trying to attract new That typically means trying to attract new business to the state, like data centers or other, some of these other large energy projects that we're seeing like Terra Power or even hydrogen or DAC and things like that. All of those sort of projects though need significant amounts of power. And since we are an energy producing state and we're sending all this energy other places, you would think it would be super easy for us to tap in to that electricity for some of these large projects. But that's not always the case. And kind of dovetailing with this is we were redirecting our efforts to really looking at electric capacity. We were working on the insight project and doing some of those site analysis across the state and found that we were having problems even getting information on electric capacity in many of our communities around the state. They didn't know what that capacity looked like. They couldn't get it from their utility provider. There's long lead times. And so when I get a project that comes across my desk or an RFI, we have to churn that around really fast and we don't always have time to wait for utility companies to get that information to the local communities or spend money to get that information. There's a lot of like roadblocks that we were kind of seeing with this. So we decided that that was kind of our first barrier that we really needed to figure out in all of this. So we have spent a lot of time talking to communities, talking to other states about how they do this. I travel to lots of different conferences and other things and know that utility providers are typically the ones that are driving projects in their state. They're the ones that are doing some of the business attraction and, and things like that. And in Wyoming, it's just not typically like that. So we've had conversations with other states, all of the utility providers, communities, the public services commission, the governor's office, trying to figure out what our barrier actually is and how to maybe overcome that. And kind of along with that, there was the rate case happening that I'm sure you've all heard about. So John has had the opportunity to really dive into looking at policy and some of those things. He just came on camera. So if you want to talk about that really quick, John, go ahead and do so.
Yeah, thanks, Wendy. And so like, so what Wendy was saying, when Sarah and Wendy and I kind of look at this problem, we kind of think of it as a short-term problem and a long-term problem. The short-term problem is this kind of lack of information or lack of just immediate power needs for economic development projects, whether that's recruitment or expansion. The longer term problem though, is really something that's, that is somewhat unique to Wyoming, but really is going to be experienced across the country. And that's this need for more infrastructure, more transmission and more capacity for the growing electricity demand that, that we as consumers and, and we as economic development folks really are, are needing for, for, for economic development projects coming. So yeah, as Wendy said, we're looking at this both as a short-term and a long-term perspective. And on the long-term side, looking at what policies that we can do as a state to ensure that we have, you know, continue to have cheap, reliable electricity to ensure that we're competitive, to attract and retain businesses. So it's, it's a large and super complex problem, as we like to say.
Good. Very complex. So currently we really are just continuing to have lots of conversations, educate ourselves, gather information to kind of help develop where we want to go from here. Maybe one of the things I would ask from you all, and we've kind of been asking this of some of our communities too, is if you know of projects that maybe your community has lost or expansion efforts that have gotten held up or things like that because of utility or electrical problems, let us know that and we can dig in a little bit deeper on that as we continue to collect information to see where we can be most effective in solving this problem.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Wendy. All right. So what we're going to do is we're going to take a five-minute break and then we will come back and hop into our, our breakout sessions. So during your break, be thinking about which breakout session you want to be a part of. And I will just switch this back and I will copy, actually what I'll do instead is copy the, the breakout sessions into the chat. And so be thinking about that and let's come back at three thirteen in five minutes. And then we will, we'll get into our breakout sessions.
So Sarah, this is Kathy. At that time, you will tell us who, uh, who can participate in the breakout sessions and how the logistics of it is going to go. Am I correct?
That's right. Yes. Amy Quick is going to be handling the logistics. And just as a preview, anybody is allowed to participate in any breakout session that, that you choose, whether you are a board member, staff, or a member of the public.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. Welcome back. Okay, while we wait for people to get back from the break, I have a, I have a question for you. What do they sing at a snowman's birthday party? For Freeze, a jolly good fellow. Isn't really, really bad, really bad.
That was not good.
Sarah, you, you need to type in the chat, G P, tell me a good joke.
Tell me a good joke. No, a better one.
Is it still a dad joke if it's a mom telling the joke?
I don't know. I don't know. I feel like it was.
If it's, if it's bad, Wendy, yes, it is still a dad joke.
Bingo. That's right where I was going.
All right. Well, Amy Quick will guide us through the logistics of our breakout sessions.
All right. Great. Thank you, everybody. Good afternoon to you all. Good to see everybody's faces. So as Sarah explained, we have seven breakout rooms and they are listed in chat, but it's workforce, housing, C E A or Controlled Environment Ag and R and D, A to A, which is the Assessment to Action Grants, Energy and Entrepreneurship. We have those folks who just gave an overview of those work streams assigned and they will be in there as a leader. And you all get the opportunity to choose one that you want to go to. Once I open those, you'll have 10 minutes in the room to have a great conversation and to dig a little bit deeper into those work streams. Those will close out, we'll come back to the main room and then you'll have a chance to choose a second work stream for another 10-minute discussion. So if you have any questions, just let us know. Ben and I will be around to try to help you troubleshoot any issues. So happy breakout rooms. You should all see those breakout rooms, hopefully. Kathy and Mark, are you finding them? So it might be under the three dots on the bottom for more.
Okay, alrighty.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. Should pay attention.
It's okay.
And Marty and Representative Conrad, I see you all. You guys are on here. You are welcome to join any breakout room as well. So far so good. Looks like workforce is the, oh, nope, entrepreneurship for winners so far. Cool. All right. I'm going to go pop into, actually I'm going to take a little bathroom break because I did not. And then I'm going to go circulate through them. I'll be right back, Julie.
Okay, bye. Welcome back, everybody. We still have some folks coming back from their breakout rooms and then we'll open them up again and you can choose another one. So be thinking about where you would like to go next.
And Amy, everybody is, is able to join these breakouts, right? Whether you're with the Business Council Board or not, is that right?
Correct. Yes. Yep. The public is invited and welcome to join and join in the conversation as well. Yes. Hey, we'll give it just a couple more seconds as people get back into here. And then you'll get option number two to have a conversation in a different work stream. Encouraging you to choose another one to learn a little bit about in the next 10 minutes. This is our fun speed date, speed dating portion of the work session. So I will open those rooms again. If you need to find it, it's in that more section, the three dots on the bottom of your screen. Enjoy. Like Housing is having a rousing discussion. They are not wanting to leave. Which is perfect.
I think Jill won the first round and then Housing won the second round. Good chance they'll have it all figured out by the time they get back, right?
Right.
So I think we'd like another opportunity to provide our pitch. Because I didn't know we were supposed to provide a sales pitch as we're going to the breakout. We just need a flashy video for next time.
We could have like Mike Rowe doing the Dirty Jobs thing or whatever and like, yeah.
Ooh, I like that. Welcome back, everybody. We were just laughing as some of you were coming back in about who won the breakout room lottery. And CEA Jill enticed everybody into her room the first round with her video. And then Housing, it looked like you all really knocked it out of the park in the second round. So I'll turn it back over to Sarah if she's back with us. To wrap us up. Alright, sounds good. And yes, virtual snacks. If only, right? Um, it sounds good. Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna wrap us up. I've got a few slides to wrap us up, but then I think we might have a little bit of time left. So if you have a question for a work stream that you didn't get a chance to pop into the breakout room or that you didn't get a chance to ask, maybe you were kicked out of your breakout room mid-sentence. Then, then this is a great time to do that with all of the, with all of the folks present, with all of our board members present. Alright. Okay. So we just laid a whole bunch of information on all of you. We, we shared a lot about a lot of different topics. And when we, we sort of tested this, we did this as a first run with the, with the all staff. With all, with all of our business council staff. And we also added to that some technical difficulties during that run. So we're, we're better this time. But if you're like us on staff, at the end of this experience, you're feeling a little bit confused. And a little bit like, there is so much going on right now. And that's, that's because it's, it's kind of a lot. There's a lot of things that are happening at the Business Council. And it's not just the Business Council, it's that 26, those 26 partner organizations who are involved too. So there's a lot to, to sort of be aware of, keep track of, to communicate about, to talk about, to make sure that we're, we're all working together really well on. And as we are entering this kind of new world of many, many, many different work streams going on at the same time. I'm finding this analogy to be helpful, to, to help me kind of frame up what's going on at the Business Council and with our partners. At least in my mind. And so maybe this will be helpful for all of you. This picture here, this is This picture here, this is not an org chart. It's not something that is, uh, has any reporting relationships in it or anything like that. It's really more like a river, like a braided river. This is the Snake River in Jackson Hole. And what a braided river is, is just a collection of many rivers that all follow the same channel. Um, and within that, those types of rivers, each of those individual streams follows its own path. But they're all connected by that one main channel. They're all heading toward the ocean. In our case, we are all following, uh, all of these work streams that you've heard about are all following their own path. They're all solving their own individual problem. They're all connected because each one of those individual problems that the work stream is solving. Ladders up and is a subproblem of our main growth challenge that the composition of economic activities in Wyoming. Is not positioned to sustain a high quality of life into the future. We're also all tied together by the process that we're using. We're all using that flywheel process of. Really problem-driven iterative adaptation. So we're all asking, what problem are we solving? How can we get our, our problem to be clearer? What steps could we take to try something to solve the problem and then reevaluating again? Within this system, it's not, um, each of one of those work streams isn't made up of exactly the same number of people. They aren't following the same path. So intersections and forks happen where they make sense. So. The workforce work stream split into four different work streams. Because that's what needed to happen to solve that bigger problem, for example. The, um, Taylor's work stream in entrepreneurship, it has a lot of overlaps with other work streams. Like the C E A work stream. Um, and so there's some, some overlaps and some, some, um, confluences there, if you will. Some streams last a long time and some are short-lived. So housing has been going on for, for quite a while. And as have those sort of main five that we started out with. Um. It, there are some that didn't make it on to that slide that I showed you. For instance, the, um. Uh, market expansion grant. The folks who developed that Kaylee and Taylor primarily, they used a P D I A. Style process, that flywheel style process for that. But it only took a couple of months. Um, and so it's not something that is still being worked on currently, except for in that. That kind of measuring and testing mode. So some will last a long time and some are short-lived. Some streams are really wide and include a lot of different partners and people working on, on the same problem. And some streams are very small. And also streams change as needed. So that, a good example of that is the energy work stream. We started out with one problem and realized. You know what? The binding constraint here is, is a different problem. And so we shifted and pivoted to work on that problem instead, really primarily. But all of these streams are always moving. Some of them move faster and some of, some of them move slower. But all of them again are tied together by that main growth challenge and we're all using the same exact process. So in this new phase where we've got all of this work happening at the same time. There are some really big challenges that are also new. Um, first, we're working on transitioning our capabilities and making this way of working really our own in anticipation of, um. As of not being supported by the, the Growth Lab or others from Harvard in the future. Um, what I think is, is really an interesting challenge that we're faced with right now is. With all of these new work streams starting, that is calling folks who haven't necessarily had the official capacity. Capacity of leading teams before to lead teams. And those are diverse teams of people who don't report to them and. Um, uh, and, and folks who they need to get on board. And so it's calling each of us to lead in ways in, in much more. Um, tangible ways probably than we ever have before. So really, everybody on the business council team. Um, is, is needing to be a, a great leader now. Um, it's also, uh, uh, a challenge to encourage effective collaboration across all of these diff. All of this different work that's happening. You can see if you look at that, that, um. If you look at this depiction, you can see how that could create silos if we're not talking to each other effectively, right? And so that, that. Communication is, is an additional challenge. And then. In addition to that, just maintaining the focus on that growth challenge, mean, making sure that. As we follow our own streams, that we're always, always. Maintaining the focus on that main growth challenge and doing that in a problem-based way. So this is not a, a comprehensive list of how we're going to solve all of those solutions. These are some, uh, of those, those challenges that we're, uh. That we're experiencing now in this new phase, but these are some of the ways that we're working on to make sure that the, that. That we are, are doing this work effectively going into the future in this new, new way of working. Um, so as you know, we are, um, our, uh, uh, contract with the Growth Lab is continuing through January of twenty twenty-five. You all approved that at your last board meeting. Um, and then through that, we are, we are deliberately. Making sure that, that learning and knowledge transfer is happening over that next year. So we're doing that through training with the leading economic growth. Of course, we're doing that by learning in, in, in work streams. Excuse me. And we're also doing that by, um. Uh, by working with another group at Harvard who, that's called the Building State Capabilities Group. And we will bring that contract to you in the February board meeting. But really most important and to that, um, to that challenge of, of growing and supporting new leaders. We're, we're really working on building systems to support a team of thousands. So what, what we're doing there is really trying to build up capabilities within each individual in the, in the business council. To lead teams to do this work. So part of that is the collaborative communication strategy that we put together and you got to see a little bit about that. Um, previously. Um, the project management role that we, um, uh, are looking forward to bringing on soon. Will, uh, will likely play a, a big part in helping us manage all of these projects that are ongoing at the same time, not only. In, within the P two P realm, but also across the rest of the business council. The academy is key to that because not only do we need to grow our leadership capabilities at, at internally at the business council. But that big growth challenge, the composition of Wyoming's economy. That's much bigger than what we at the business council can even lead through leadership of our own teams. And so developing that leadership. Um, throughout our partners is also absolutely critical. The Enlightenment series is a series of several workshops that's really designed to help people at the business council and our partners. Um, develop themselves as team members and as leaders. And so I see, and this is something that, that Haba has put together and, um. And is executing, uh, with a lot of, of, um, thought and, um, and deliberate really care. And I, I see it as it's culture building. It's, it's very, um, tangible. Uh, a tangible experience of culture building. Um, and I see it as something that is an absolute critical path. To, to achieving the, the work that we're trying to do here with P two P. The business council budget supports this work in many ways. And what's pretty cool is that. Some of our partners' budget, also budgets also support this work, um, uh, in individual work streams. So. To do this work, what we're needing to do is build that team of thousands, draw connections from lots of different other organizations and. Throughout the business council internally and, and throughout all of you as well. What we need from you and each one of those work stream leads had an ask for you too. And I think this is really similar is. We, um, we just appreciate it when you all are very curious and we, um, uh, we know that. Like I said, you probably got cut off mid-sentence. And so if there's something that you really are curious about. We just, um, would love to talk with you more about it. So, um, reach out to that work stream lead, um, or to me. Or to whomever, if you'd like to learn more about any, um, any specific work stream. Or the system that we're building to support this new way of working too. Um, and then our second ask is to join this community of leaders and help support this, this, um, way of leading into the future. Um, and one way to do that is by participating in the Enlightenment series. The next session will be in early to mid-January and, and Hava can tell us more about that if you're interested. Um, but with that, I would love to hear your thoughts and your questions about the systems we're building. If you've got any leftover questions that you didn't get answered in the breakout sessions about individual work streams, this is also a great time to do that.
Dr. Schaefer.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Co-Chair. Sarah, thanks for that. And thanks for the, the deep dive and update on the work streams. Um, and, and I really appreciate you saying that, that you encouraged us to be curious and get involved. And I just want Director Durrell to remember you said that, um, when we get, we get involved. So it, it, one, one question I have and what's interesting and, and I guess I'm a little bit curious of, when, when we do, um. Dissertation work, we oftentimes start very similar, define a problem, understand the problem. Understanding the problem, we do that through what we call literature review. You're doing it through this sort of progressive iterative process. One of the challenges we always find with our doctoral students though is that. They, they never stop. And, and just like your river analogy, you can keep fragmenting the problem and fragmenting the problem. And so my question is. When do we move from problem to hypotheses to solution? Or is your idea to keep driving these until they become so local that we get to localize solutions? Cause really, I think. And, and I, I'm probably not very well aware, but I think we've really, we've tested the Y V C. That's kind of a hypothesis, right? And. And maybe plenty because it came to us. But, but we haven't, I don't know that we've gotten into hypotheses and, and solution implementation. So anyways. The, I, I just wonder when we get past and say, we know enough about the problem that it's time for us to try something. How is that kind of going to flow? And is that what you mean by when we get to the project management phase?
That is just, that's my favorite question that I have ever been asked in my entire life, probably, Dr. Schaefer. It's such a cool question. Um. And I, I think it's so cool because I don't have a really awesome answer for you, but I do have some examples. So. The S B I R program is a, is a, an excellent example of. One that we, well, the S B I R program and then its partner, which you might remember, um, potentially our other board members will definitely remember. The Kickstarter program. Those are two really good examples of, um. You know, more than five years ago, we recognized this problem, which was a, a gap in really early stage. Funding for high-growth potential entrepreneurs. We tried both of those problems. Uh, or both of those solutions to try to solve that problem. And when we tested those solutions, the S B I R program, um, really showed us that we knew how to implement it really well. It was a repeatable. Solution and it was, was solving the problem. And so we're continuing to measure that. And test if it's, if it's continuing to solve the problem now. Um, but that's, but that's in really an implement mode at this point in time. Um, with the housing work stream too, and Heather can, can weigh in on this as well. Um. We, we are at that action phase where we're, we're, um, uh, trying to really, um. Help, uh, folks at the local level understand what, what steps they can take. To reduce the regulations that are, um, are impeding, uh, uh, housing growth in their own communities. Um, but. I think that, that, you know, more at the higher level, um. When do you start? When do you start testing and when do you start acting? I think it's when you have something to do. I think it's when you, when you can and when you've, um. At least in my experience in, in those examples and other examples. When, when you have the problem defined well, a solution kind of falls out. If that makes any sense. Josh has his hand raised and he might have a more eloquent way of answering that question. And I definitely invite others to, to answer that as well.
And thanks, Sarah. That's, I mean, what I appreciate about this approach, and Josh will probably, probably expand on it. Is mo- most people, and unfortunately in the public sector, we have these fits and starts. We jump to an idea without defining the problem, understanding the context. And so you never gain good traction, let alone. Have successful implementation. So usually you should get to the point where people are so tired of talking about the problem. That they're ready to jump on the solution. So I actually appreciate the measured approach and really the, the approach that you're taking. I'm not suggesting that. That you should change that. Um, but, but I do kind of hope that you get to the point where people just say, okay, we know enough now to try X. And it emerges more naturally. And I think that would be fantastic, um, especially as you broaden the involvement in these.
Well, if, if I can jump in, um, Sarah and Madam Co-Chair and Dr. Schaefer, I, I think that that's, that's the cool part about this. Is that we're actually solving problems while we're defining the problem. That's the other part is that we're making small steps because I think the best way to. To actually understand the problem is to be doing those mini experiments. And, and in some cases, we're doing that right now. We don't have some big statewide housing, um, you know, panacea. We have. A bunch of conversations with city officials saying, these are the things that you should consider reducing or changing. These are the, and they're saying, oh, I could do that one. I could do this one. Those are things that are happening while we're learning and while we're working. And I think that's the other part of this that is going to be a little bit of a challenge is that sometimes we'll have a program that has statewide applicability. Other times we will be solving all sorts of problems and never kind of get the credit for it or the, the big. Uh, the big headline of a program that is statewide and there's all this money toward it or there's policy changes. But we'll make a lot of progress without that. And it gets down to what you said, the, I, I love the term localized solutions. Because ultimately what we're really doing is we will have some programs and some solutions that, that we can kind of brand and. They're like B R C and they're great. But ultimately what we're trying to do is teach people how to fish so well. That they don't come to us for lures even. They know how to fish and they know how to solve problems because a lot of those, a lot of the. Things that we can solve are at a local level. And they can be solved today. What we're, what we're finding is that a lot of the challenges that, that we see are sort of. They're, there's, they're probably more self-imposed and we have more power than we think to change and we, we may not even need the state. And so I think if we can do that. Then we're gonna, then we're going to have those big, you know, headline grabbing solutions that come out from time to time. But I think we need to reframe what we think of as a solution. And it's more about remedying problems rather than jump, like you said. We get this idea, we jump on it, we put a whole bunch of money behind it. We, we spend a lot of like political capital to do it. And then nothing happens. Nothing good comes out of it. And so it's gonna be, it's gonna be, um, I think it's gonna be. There are probably all sorts of really bad ways to say this, but it's gonna be a shift in the way people think about solutions. And it's gonna be a shift in the way people. Deal with the, the problem-solving process. But it's also gonna be a shift in the way, the, the amount of success we're gonna have, I think. And so I think that ultimately. The proof is gonna be in the pudding and maybe even people won't know. And that's, that's one of the other parts about this. Sarah mentioned this idea of a team of thousands. The idea of silos and the idea of that, isn't that somebody else's problem or isn't that their problem to solve? We, we're kind of breaking that down and saying that these are Team Wyoming's problems. And we're gonna, we're gonna share the load. And, and at least from our perspective, we're not gonna care about the credit. And I think that that's something that we all kind of have to get behind because we want other people to be able to shine with this and they'll be able to. And we want our work to kind of be behind the scenes, be the, the, the. The ones that are helping connect, make the connections, maybe not ultimately solving it, but facilitate this process. And have it be almost invisible. And so it's pretty exciting for us because we care about solving the problem and we're all on the, on the team to solve the problem. And I think it's gonna be, um, it's gonna be fun to see how it unfolds over the next few years. With that many different agencies and organizations. I think it's just, like, the, the idea that there's gonna be a team of thousands. I think there might all. With that many different agencies and organizations. I think it's just the, like the, the idea that there's gonna be a team of thousands. I think there might already be. So, um, now it's just helping it function really, really well. So I, I love that question too. That was a really good one. Thanks for letting us jump up on our soapbox for a minute.
Well, we are.
Oh, go ahead.
Sarah, where are you going? I was just.
No, you go again.
Okay, I was just gonna say that it's four oh three. But if anybody else has any other questions, I'd be happy to take them for those of you who can stick around.
I just have a closing remark if nobody has any questions. I am so impressed with the belief. That the team has in the process and the ability of the folks to pivot when they see that something. May not be working cohesion with something else. And Sarah, I love the visual of the, of the Snake River and all the streams leading to one. I thought that was awesome. Uh, the work you, as has shown this afternoon, the work you have all done is tremendous. And I think you all get a, a hand of applause for it because the whole team is involved in this. And it's all going to, as Josh stated, it's all going to lead to something really good for Team Wyoming. Um, so if nobody has anything else. Oh, remember tomorrow we have our board meeting, another meeting. We have our board meeting beginning at nine o'clock. Um, and it's virtual again and we'll talk to everybody there. So. Thank you all for what you do.
Thank you, guys. This was awesome.
Yep.
Great. Lots of good information. Appreciated the breakout sessions. That was a good opportunity to get a little further. Thanks for setting that up.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
See you tomorrow.